Get started, do you want to introduce that we have, looks like we have staff planning commissioners? Thanks for Mayor Sullivan for joining us. I don't see anyone from the public, so if anyone joins in, I'll let you know. And if you want to give them a chance to ask questions, leave that up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll let you run this one.
Okay.
This is a work session. If you've got the stuff put together, I'll just sit back and quietly like everybody else. And when you're done and want questions, just recall for them and that'd be great.
Okay. All right, well, we'll get started. There's not a lot of language to review here, and we have two discussion items. I think the, this has been a conversation that has come up on a, on multiple times in the CBD especially. And a requirement for ground floor, historically buildings were built, mixed use especially, and parking was in the rear. I think the marketability and feasibility of the cost now are driving people to push lot line to lot line, to lot line. And with parking underground, and if they can squeeze a few more units out, that requires more parking on the ground floor. But what's happening is it's cutting into the commercial square footage of our CBD, which is critical to a downtown. And, and that hits everything from its vitality and when it's, the economy's down to tax, sales tax, everything. So we've seen a few, and I know y'all have debated this, it was before my time, it just didn't land, I think, on a percentage. So within the CBD ordinance, there's one potential thing we can add, and that is shown on the screen in red. And for those that might be on the phone, it reads in mixed-use buildings within the CBD, retailer office must make up at least 50% of the total area of the ground floor. The total area of the ground floor includes interior or covered parking. Now, I appreciate Chris, and for those that haven't met, weren't here last month, Chris Williams is our new attorney with Hand, Air and Doll. And he was grateful to spend some time with me this morning and kind of critique some things, and I really appreciate that, because some of these were train-of-thought language coming out last night. So I think it is worthwhile to, what is the intent of the planning commission and city council if we want to do this? Is it, are we trying to, I don't think I've gotten this feeling from anyone. I think instead of retail office or office, the appropriate thing should read "commercial", so it wouldn't limit restaurants or anything like that, or things that we haven't thought about. But just making sure that ground floor at street level has a component of, of commercial that is important to the, and this only applies to mixed use. We would not be taking the rights away from people that just wanted to do residential, because what, what they get extra by doing mixed use is a taller building. So the, I think "commercial", but I'll, if anyone has a debate on that or wants to debate that one, let's do it now, and then we can talk about percentage. If I hear quiet, I think I'll switch that to "commercial". Yes, ma'am, Rebecca?
I personally, oh, go ahead, Sharon.
It's Rebecca.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, when you said it just includes the height, also, in mixed use, isn't it true that with a mixed use, you're only allowed, you're only required to have one parking space per residential? And regular residential is required two parking spaces?
Rebecca, you threw me for a loop there. I've been kind of under the impression and everything I'm reading, that parking in the CBD is one space per residential unit.
One space per residential in the CBD regardless of mixed use or
Right.
Commercial.
Oh, okay. So I, I still thought that the mixed use was the outlet for that. That was how people were getting, reducing that parking.
No, that's actually in D1, right, or D2, right above this. It's any dwelling unit in the CBD.
In the, in the Central Business District, you are not required any parking at all.
Yeah. Residential.
One of the things when Tim Cant was the mayor, that he was extremely concerned about was having, you know, condos without, you know, or residential units without their own dedicated parking. And so, a requirement was put that for any residential unit, you have to have one dedicated parking space.
Yeah.
And we talked a number of times about, you know, doing money to the parking authority or things like that, because, you know, on the one hand, you know, if somebody like John Bathey puts an office upstairs, you know, it'll take a lot more parking than one, you know, condo will. And the people will be there all day, where people in a condo might be gone during the day. But Tim's concern was more along the lines of just if you live somewhere, that you need to have a space, more of kind of a principle issue than how many spaces are picking up on the street.
Well, okay, I just, well, this, this is going to be beyond the scope of today, but I will just want to register the concern I'm hearing as more and more dense residential developments get proposed, not just a shopkeeper or one apartment above one shop. When you've got, you know, 24 or 36 units proposed, and they only have one space per unit, that starts to be, and they have, you know, that, that starts to put some pressure as well. Okay.
Becky, you are absolutely 100% correct, and I think we're seeing the eye to eye on this. You know, the concerns are that right now residential properties are really hot in the Central Business District. The concern is, if you start allowing everything to be residential on the ground floor and, you know, drive-ins and upstairs with apartments below, that, you know, you start losing the continuity of the commercial. And it's kind of like when the Corte Building came in, you know, on Church, right there, you know, we, we made sure that that, you know, first, that whole plan was going to be condos. And we required them at the time in mixed use, we used to require the ground floor to be commercial. And what we wanted in the mixed use was the ground floor commercial to keep, you know, the continuity, but then the residential upstairs to bring, you know, merchants in. And, you know, the residential has taken off so much that now that's the real push. And I think that, you know, we've got with John Bathey's building, with Matt Porter's building, with, you know, the building out there by the post office, we've just put a whole lot of, of commercial inventory on and taken that commercial demand, you know, for a short time. But the concern is, we don't want to, you know, restrict the downtown too much. You know, Hunter, I think we should require in the Central Business District 50% commercial regardless of whether it's mixed use or not. Otherwise, people are just going to say, heck, we don't need to do mixed use, let's just do it on the ground floor.
That's about where I was, I think we should all discuss that. I was, where I was going is, what are they, if we restrict what define, what, what it takes to be called mixed use, what are they losing? And if it's just height, for some people, that might be a big deal. For other people, they'll say, whatever, I'll just be all residential. I do want to make the point, so, so where I was confused about that outside of the CBD, if you have mixed use, then you just need one space per dwelling unit. So that might, this might have an impact outside of the CBD, it would just increase the parking require, it wouldn't allow somebody to toss in one commercial unit and reduce their parking requirement somewhere else.
Hunter, I've got the parking schedule pulled up on my screen. I can read it off real quick.
That does, yeah.
Well, and it's, it's kind of funny, because Art's in my office, and he was here 15 minutes early, and we spent those 15 minutes talking about parking.
Yeah.
That is a can of worms that we start opening, and we're going to keep debating it, and it's valid. It's a conversation we need to have. But, you know, there's four potential projects coming that range anywhere from eight to 30 units, residential and very little, I, what I don't want to do, if, if you're interested in looking at this, and the planning commission is, then we can kick this can once we start up talking about parking, and it's much down the road. So while it's valid, is it, the immediate concern is my worry.
Yeah, let's, let's make a decision and not, not, not quit making a decision.
I'm thinking we should worry about the outside of the Central Business District. Yeah, let's, I think, focus on this at this point. And, and, you know, I don't think we give enough height, you know, with the mixed use, and that there's enough additional benefit with the mixed use for us. I mean, I think in the commercial, we need to have, in the CBD, I think we need to have commercial on the ground floor, especially facing the street. And I don't think it matters whether it's mixed use or not. I think either way, we need to keep that continuity.
Okay. Now, that, that triggers, so, but if we don't say mixed use, we allow single-family residences in B2 by the use table. So there's a conflict there.
Wait, say that one more time.
District, in the Central Business District, we do?
Residential and all, we, non, we define, we do not prohibit single-family. So the use table has it in B2, and then it's not prohibited here. So by that, it is allowed by law. You know, and, and there's a distinction between residential and non-residential buildings.
But that, but you said single-family residential, so this would be, none of these projects are single-family residential?
They are not. The, the short-term, you know, but, but I understand where these come from. If somebody just says, well, fine, we'll squeeze it under, we'll make eight-foot ceilings instead of nine-foot, and squeeze it all under 35-foot instead of 40, and take it 400 square, or 300 square foot space out and be residential.
Let me, I'm sorry to, okay, I'm just going to interrupt. I'm, I'm reading the CBD standards, okay? No parking is required for non-residential uses in the CBD. Dwelling units shall provide the required parking. And then when I go to the parking table, it says one parking space per mixed use. So I don't, I don't see where it just says on a blanket basis that you get only one space per residential in the CBD, but maybe, maybe I just am missing it.
Rebecca, that's one space per dwelling unit in the parking table.
Yeah, for mixed, okay. Tell me what page you're on. I'm on 46, and then I went to the parking table.
Table 4-3, on page 38.
I'll stop interrupting, I just had this in my head. But so, all other dwelling units would be, nowhere in this table does it say one space in the CBD. Oh, never mind. So, I still don't see where it says that a non-mixed-use residential unit in the CBD is allowed to have one space. These standards shall not apply in the CBD overlay. But then you go to the CBD overlay, and it says that residential has to provide the required parking. I go back to the parking schedule to look at what the required parking is, and it tells me that a mixed-use dwelling unit has one space per dwelling unit, all other dwelling units has two spaces per dwelling unit. And the reason I'm beating this is I do, I thought that what we were talking about today has an impact on parking. It seems like it does. And I think it would be a positive impact, frankly, if we made it harder for somebody to claim mixed use with the token, one 400-square-foot commercial space, and then have to reduce their parking behalf, required parking behalf.
And Rebecca, I'm, I'm trying to get on board with mixed-use dwell, it's okay, so the land use there is residential. Residential would, that's going to talk about the underlying zoning. So that, and, and mixed-use dwelling unit is, so that, I would, I would say based on the land use within that table, where it says residential, then B2, which most of these are, would not apply to the two spaces per dwelling unit. Because these are in B2, B4-zoned properties.
Well, but go back to, hold on, we were back at 44, in the CBD, there is. So, okay. In this CBD uses, and it's under dimension standards, no parking is required for non-residential uses, blah, 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 blah. Dwelling units, dwelling units shall provide the required parking. So you're saying that the required parking is not what's required for residential units, it's what's required for B2? That doesn't make, that doesn't make sense to me.
Mixed use.
So, I mean, if I'm, I'm on page 46, you know, 4.4, D2, dwelling unit shall
I'm reading that as every dwelling unit in, in CBD.
Let's, let's do this for right now, so we don't get too far astray in the limited time we have for our meeting.
Yeah.
Let's make the assumption that what we have been requiring, what the staff, you know, the last three planning staffs have required, since Tim Cant was mayor, what's been required is one parking space per dwelling unit in the Central Business District.
I guess my, my point is, I think
So let's, let's pretend like right now that that's the requirement, and later
Okay.
we can look and make sure that's correct. Because right now, you know, we've got a lawsuit going on, Rebecca, because what happens is, and one of the things, like, of what I want to do, what Hunter's concern is, of what I just suggested, is that we might have conflicting data on the Central Business District. Because what happens is, is sometimes we make a change, and we make that change, it conflicts with something else. So then when somebody wants to do something counter to what the requirement is, you know, they find some dangling chad in there.
Yeah.
That was sort of overlooked that we didn't intend. But right now, the requirement that the last, you know, that the staff has, you know, enforced for the last 12 years, is one parking space per residential unit in the Central Business District.
Okay. Let me just ask one question before I let that lie. Haven't all of those projects been mixed-use projects?
No.
Okay.
They are strictly residential projects. In fact, it's something that looks just like a single family, but is used to business standards. And that's where a key word for residential, non-residential, mixed use, when you start pulling at strings, like we're doing right now on parking, it, it, it becomes something that is bigger than one note.
Okay. Well, I'll let it go. I, I'll just say as a, you know, as an architect, I've always read what we're reading right now, and it reads to me that you have to, you have to provide two, two parking spaces for residential, because that's what it says, but if you're mixed use, you can go to one. I've always interpreted it that way, because that's the way the language reads. But I'll let that go for right now.
Yeah, well, let's come back to that and look at that later, and we might even need to ask our council to look at that and see, and just make sure that that's how we want it to be.
Yeah. Well, it'd be great if we could, we could close more loopholes with this change, if, if that was enforced the way it's written, if we're able to.
Okay, that's a good point. What I'm getting at is, I think we need to require the 50% ground floor in the Central Business District regardless of whether it's mixed use or not. What happened was, when we gave, when we passed the mixed use, we gave the additional height, and we also had a ground floor requirement that went to city council that apparently never got passed, or approved. And I think that that might be where the, where the rub is. And I think that, you know, what my concern is, is if we simply, you know, say that, hey, you know, if it's mixed use, 50% of the ground floor has to be residential, with all these projects that are just, you know, giving you 400-square-foot little home office and calling it mixed use, kind of like, you know, trade did years ago on Church Street, which is kind of the area that's always problematic, because that's kind of residential, even though it's in the CBD. You know, you allow it there, but you got to allow it somewhere else. And we really don't want, like, on Sexton Street or Fairhope Avenue, you know, in the CBD, you know, a bunch of apartments or a bunch of, you know, you know, a parking garage or something, you know? And I'm thinking we probably need to require the height allowance is that much more on the, you know, on the mixed use, that it really, I think, would require somebody to do mixed use. I think if somebody then didn't like that commercial requirement, they'd just say, well, heck, I'm just building a building, I'm not going to do mixed use. And I don't think we would have accomplished anything.
This is Mike Lee, and I'm just thinking that mixed-use term, there is under the dimension standards, subletter L, that talks about mixed use, where it gives you the extended height, but that's for any commercial zone, and it was given a percentage of at least 33% residential minimum, and didn't give any type of cap on or minimum for commercial. But that didn't necessarily have to do with the Central Business District.
Yeah, I, and I'm going to throw another confusion in there, but I thought that we had changed the CBD, so, I mean, it still says business, building height for all structures is 40 feet. I thought when we raised that, we took out the mixed-use exemption, but that's maybe my bad memory.
I thought we did too. I thought the height was the height regardless of whether it's mixed use or not.
Yeah.
So, and this is where we have gotten different interpretations of, of that. And none of us were here, and I know that's a head part-burn. What is the, some of the thoughts I've heard was when it went to 40 feet, it was 40 feet was the height. That's the upper cap of the height. So you can get three floors in without squeezing things and not having flat roofs. And then something happened at another time that changed it to midpoint of roofs, which would allow a 50-foot building.
Well, we talked about those things with Wayne.
Well, and, and I'm, when things were approved and built, there was, that wasn't what we meant when, or the interpretation I was told and by some, was when we gave the extra five feet, it's so we weren't arguing over those architectural details, screening of roof equipment, et cetera.
That is correct, and I don't know when that, that remeasurement for the downtown occurred. We had a remeasurement come in, and it was brought to us innocuously that there were some issues with residential measurements, and I think even Eric Kritinas may have had something to do with that, when they were showing, you know, how they measure buildings on lots of grades. And they asked for, you know, a change, but I, but I was not in the awareness that that was going to apply to the measuring of the commercial in downtown.
And we have
Kind of the worst when it passed.
Well, I mean, again, we're on something, we haven't even gotten through the first, and we're on another tangent, so.
Well, and it's relevant, because it's what, it's the only reason people care if it's mixed use or not, is because they get these exceptions. So I have this in, from 2017, we passed the, the change in how you measure the vertical height, and it changed it to the mean. And at the time, I was remembering, I mean, that was, that Wayne wanted to encourage not just flat-roofed buildings, but buildings with lower eaves that, and that's kind of softer. And it, it says it's to provide continuity between the zoning ordinance and the building code, but it's
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and the discussion, and we've, we've watched the council meetings, and that discussion was, this is, this is the top of the, you know, 40-foot is the top when it was raised to 40.
Okay.
We're not going to get debates on, so there's a conflict, I think, in those two areas that, that needs to be discussed. I've been talking about building height for a few months now, so it definitely needs to be discussed and resolved. We are applying, the way we're applying that 40-foot, and I'll just tell you what staff's doing, the 30, build 235 was an allowance of mixed use. That is where we're triggering that right now in our interpretations. If that's wrong, that's, that we need to know that, and we need to make sure, but, but there's some conflict in the intent at least, whether it's a conflict in the, the language. So we do need guidance on that, but right now, mixed use is allowed to build to, was allowed to build to 35 feet, now 40 feet. If we want just single-family residential to build to 40 feet and other building types, then, then we can be clear on that.
And Hunter, if I can jump in here and just kind of support your statement right there, and to refresh everyone's memory, mixed use outside the CBD, mixed use gives you five extra feet. Because the, in general, outside the CBD, the maximum building height is 30 feet. Mixed use gives you five more feet. In the CBD, it's 40 feet, period. So just, that's how we've been doing it.
What you're saying is, you don't get anything in the CBD for mixed use versus non-mixed use.
We are, we have not been interpreting that way, Lee. You actually do. We have been tying that 40-foot number to mixed use, so the, instead of the number as 35 outside, it's 40 within the CBD. Not
What if somebody comes in the CBD with a residential building with 12 units, not mixed use?
Yeah.
How high can they be?
Is it 30 or 35 in the use table or dimension table? I can't shift over to that.
Well, it's the dimensional standards say building heights for all structures shall not exceed 40 feet. Like, we got to clean that up, that's not true. I thought
Well, and to you, and, and I went to council, and I've talked to you, you guys about it. I don't want to, you know, elaborate too much in, in a public meeting, that, yeah, there's some conflicts there. That was kind of what I've, I've been trying to get across, that there, there's conflicts. We need guidance on
What if, what if there's a, what if somebody comes up with a pure commercial building? They get 40 feet, don't they?
Sounds like
That is, that's, all of those are great questions, and what the direction is, is what we would like to hear, and be consistent on, on our interpretations, our language, and our intent.
Well, where I thought we're, and I'm, and I messed up sometimes as it goes to city council, but where I thought we were was 40 feet in the Central Business District for everything, regardless.
Okay.
And my main burning concern has been that as we allow people to do, you know, as the residential, you know, is hot, and we allow people to do residential in the Central Business District with no regard, you know, on mixed use of how much, you know, how much commercial they put on it, that we're going to have an issue. And I just think in the Central Business District, we don't need to get too complicated. I just think if the city council is willing, that we need to require 50% of the ground floor in the Central Business District only to be commercial. And we need to have very strong language encouraging, maybe not requiring, but encouraging with our site plan reviews, that that commercial is facing the main street, and that any residential or parking on the ground floor will hopefully, maybe not 100% required, but strongly urged, you know, on our site reviews, to be in the rear of the building.
But isn't, I thought I was, I thought the conflict with doing that is that there's zoning that still is like residential zoning in the CBD, so you couldn't require them to
Well, then, we, you know, there, there's some anecdotal, and we can clean that up too, but the only, you know, concern, you know, or board of adjustments to look at, you know, you've got that, I don't know of any residential zoning in this, in the CBD, but you do have the west side of Church Street, north of Magnolia, that's 100% residential right now. And whenever we do stuff, people always want to point to that. But the point is, you know, we got really lucky with Courtney, because at one point, you know, that whole ground floor was going to be residential right there along Church Street from Delamar, you know, over almost to Fairhope Avenue. And imagine how much it would change that would be, you know, in the central business district if, you know, if basically, you know, we broke up the, the flow of that residential, because right now, it's so perfect there, I mean, that, you know, is that, you know, you've got all of that commercial, and it winds itself all the way around through the Church Mouse and Sandra's and back over to, you know, the restaurants, and it gives you that continuity that you need for everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, Hunter, so you don't have to unshare your screen? Can I just read something super quick?
Sure.
Okay. The dimensions table in the zoning ordinance, B2, on the far right column, it says maximum building height 30 feet, and next to 30 feet are two footnotes. Footnote K, as in kilo, central business district, 40 feet, period. If it's zoned B2 in the CBD, the building height's 40 feet. That's right off the dimensions table. Then there's footnote L, which explains the mixed use provision outside the CBD, and that's the 30 versus 35 and all of that. But it's very clear, 40 feet tall if you're zoned B2 in the CBD.
So the bottom line is, if we just say, hey, if you're mixed use, you've got to have 50%, you know, commercial on the ground floor. If they don't want 50% commercial, they just make it non-mixed use.
Yeah.
It's 100% residential.
Yeah, if we can get back to that, that would be great. Do we need to have any guidance on, I, I think the intent from all conversations is when we calculate ground floor, what we mean by that, and can be more clear, because Chris brought this point up, how do we define that? That includes interior parking, that includes any interior space, you know, whether they're going to have to, they're going to have to put garbage cans somewhere, for instance, and we've seen some of those. They put that kind of in the parking garage. So basically, it's a building on piers, and then kind of cover one corner with a couple of walls and get a little office space, but anything with under, under that footprint is what my, I'm envisioning everybody is talking about when we, we calculate.
Yeah.
And Art's shaking his head and agreeing, if y'all can't hear him. Does everybody else agree with that concept?
My brain's not rattling today.
Hunter, I think that's perfect, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet here for a second, but I do have, something has occurred to me, and, and I'll jump in when you give me clearance to jump in.
Is it about building height or parking?
No, it's about neither. It's about neither.
All right, go ahead.
I think we need to make an outright, an outright disallowance of storage facilities in the CBD, and here's my rationale. What if someone says, okay, on the first floor, I'll have internal storage units, so that way my residences above can use them?
Mm-hmm.
Now, what that does is it satisfies the commercial requirement, and it prevents, it means they get the easy way out. They don't have to have a restaurant, an office, or anything like that, so you don't have any amenities or anything that supports the CBD. Right now, they could do that. They would have to go through board of adjustments to get those storage units approved in any B2 zoning, but I think that's something we had, should have consider, an outright prohibition in the CBD, so that way they don't get an easy way out. It needs to be something that truly supports the CBD and not an easy way out.
It seems, go ahead.
Beaufort, isn't there a minimum acreage on those storage units? I don't think that's an issue. I look in the section for storage, isn't there maybe two acres or something like that?
Well, so it says, actually, here's what it says, exterior personal storage facilities on less than two acres, and indoor personal storage facilities may be located in the B2 district and only by special exemption. So it doesn't give any kind of dimensional requirement if it's an indoor, if it's an indoor storage.
So, I mean, we really don't, I mean, I think what we're trying to preserve is the street front, so I don't want to, like, if somebody wanted to have storage on the ground floor in a dark corner somewhere, and it's not on the street front, I don't care. You know, if it serves their tenants or something, somebody might have downsized, and they're moving, I, I don't, I guess I would want to be careful that we're not being too prescriptive, because the issue is the street front. And, you know, we don't want storage units facing the street. We want active retail commercial space that's, that invites the public.
Well, and that's why I wanted to bring it up for debate, because it just dawned on me.
You could all, but you could call it, you know, if it's, if it's storage for the people in their own units, you would call it a garage, I would think. You know, what they do with their garage, where they put a car in it or stuff in it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I guess Rebecca, what I was thinking was that you put up, you put up storefront glazing, and then right behind, you put up dark-tenanted storefront glazing, and right behind it are storage units, and that's how they get an easy way to, to satisfy the commercial component.
Gotcha. Yeah.
There's 100,000 different ways that people can try to thread, even, it's just a magic matter of what the intent is, and it seems, it seems to me that the intent for, for those storage units would be part of the residential. Well, that's not commercial. I mean, it's not like they're out there opening them up to the public to come in and use.
Yeah, and I, I think the board of adjustment would be savvy to that, that that's not meeting the intent of the, what we're doing here. Storage is a service in our use table, not a, not a retailer office, but some things we do want in service, like restaurants are in there, so I, I think that being, you know, especially because we're going to, they're going to ask us, and we're going to say, no, that's not the intent, you know, we're, we're, we're not going to support that. I, I think, I, I think we're bringing up ideas that, you know, we, we can sit here all day and bring up what may happen, and we haven't made it through one sentence yet, so.
Hunter, do you, did I hear wrong, or is there, is there an issue with what, what Lee is proposing, that it's, it's just, instead of in mixed-use buildings, it would be in all buildings or in commercially zoned areas within the CBD?
I, I'll tell you what, let me, I, I'm not opposed to that, but I haven't researched that at all, so let, let, I will make a note right here. So I've done two things, and y'all can see my screen and my notes. I've made this note here, and then let me, let me put in here, all buildings versus mixed use.
I think I'm talking too much, but I just, for the record, I think I'm less concerned about the total floor area as I am the street front, because I'm imagining some funky-shaped lot, and, you know.
We've got to have some, something that says how deep it is. We can't, we, we've kind of talked about this, when the street frontage and how that hits is not, it's not something we can cover in a short. If y'all, if we want to scrap this, and it's been six months, we can probably get to something, but.
I, I think if people are going to be required to have 50%, you know, commercial, they're obviously going to want the commercial to be the best it can be, and they're probably going to put it on the front anyway. I mean, I couldn't imagine somebody putting, you know, a residential unit on the front, and then the commercial back behind it.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, requiring it, it be 50% of the ground floor is, is commercial, and in that stating that, you know, it's urged, if at all possible, that that commercial be street frontage, I think that would, you know, we're not going to, there's no way in the world we can get into the minutia and get 100% of everything, but I think that'll at least be the 80/20 rule, you know?
There is a, you know, there's some other language in here that helps, you know? This is one we talked about this morning, parking is required behind the building, not inside the building. So we haven't ever really had that debate, but that, that's something to keep in mind, you know, in this number one under parking, but we could. Uh, parking is required, parking is required, it shall be located behind the building, screened from public right-ofways. So you get semantics, is it behind the front wall or behind the building? You know, there, but there's other language there that helps the, you know, what, what that concern is, and I think it's something to consider. It's just a bigger animal to, to try to tame right now.
So, so, yeah, I don't have any problem with parking under a building, but are we, I mean, what we're doing if we're.
Rebecca, if it's under, Rebecca, I do, if it's under a building on the street front, I do.
Well, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I just mean, if you tuck the parking in the back, and you're, you're actually providing parking and sort of helping us with, you know, crowding, and you have a viable storefront on the front, I don't mind it being there, even if it's underneath something built above it, and that allows the space to be more commercially viable. You know, I, I don't have a problem with that, with, instead of it being behind a building with air above it.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, we agree on that. I'm, I'm just, when I'm, I was hoping we were doing something that would encourage, well, I guess we are doing something that encourages true mixed use. There's just no longer an incentive, what, what we used to have is more of an incentive, and now we just have a requirement, if we, if this passed.
Yeah, and i- if, if what you're saying is the, the heights went up, then the incentive was taken away in 2017.
Right now, there's no incentive to do mixed use at all, but, but to do mixed use doesn't need to be incentivized, because everybody wants to do residential. That's, everybody's chomping at the bit for residential, and because of that residential pressure, you know, we're at the point that we need to, you know, where we used to be, you know, really incentivizing residential with the mixed use, and the mixed use was set up to incentivize residential. It's now kind of boomeranged 180 degrees to where everyone wants to do residential, and the commercial is slacking off, and we're in a situation where we're concerned that we have too much residential come in and break up the continuity of the commercial in the CBD, so we're simply trying to require a percentage of commercial on the ground floor.
So, so the effect of this, though, I mean, I'm just trying to think through the repercussions. So the effect is, yeah, protecting that commercial viability of downtown. The other effect is this will limit the density of residential, because you're limiting amount, the amount of space available on the ground floor plan to provide parking.
Ding, 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 ding. That's it. You got it.
No.
That, that effect is what you're doing by this. You, you, if they can't provide parking, there's, there's, there's decisions to be made on how the building lays out, does it go all the way to the lot lines, you know, and how many, how many residential units you can squeeze out of a relatively small lot. And there's always an option, as we talked about with the regular-shaped lots, small lots, board of adjustment can change that percentage, if needed.
Hi, um, can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I've been listening to this, and if, I feel like if we allow too much residential, we're going to, like you said, lose continuity of what you're trying to do or what you want, and even though people want to live, like, in these areas, at some point, I think you just have to, you can't, it's growth, but is it going to hurt us? And we'll end up kind of like in a situation where we have more residents and people that want to be commercial, we don't have the, the room or the space to actually make commercial, because we've been, we've allowed ourselves to bend and bow to the people who want it to be more residential. But with the parking, I mean, I think we should look at, there's a place in Newport News, Virginia, and it's called Port Warwick, and they have the same concept of what we're trying to come up with, where they park in the back of the building, but they allow the people to parallel park on the side versus the backing in and backing up off the, uh, I can't remember the new place that's down from the post office, which is like a nightmare, but, um, I think we really need to, like, kind of look at this differently than what we're looking at it, for some of us, anyway. And that's all I have to say.
And I, and I'll, I'll say this again, and I know Rebecca and I emailed, so I'll say this for everyone else's. There are, there is a lot of different ways to look at this, and all of these things are valid. Then there's the, what are we sensing today? So sometimes, there's a difference between being proactive and reactive, and right now, we're in a, a need to be reactive, and we can, we can spend time to be proactive, and I welcome any thoughts y'all have, I'll be happy to compile it and a study for that. But we, we have a short-term goal right now, and while it might not be perfect, it, it's, it's, I, I recommend it, that it's up to the planning commission and city council to, to adopt.
Mm-hmm. The, the reactive component of that is to basically do what was proposed by Hunter in the, in the very beginning before this discussion, which had to do, I don't think Lee was talking to that, is getting the 50% of the ground floor, then it has to be commercial. Commercial is obviously defined, it, it, and then dealing with the rest of it, because we do have things coming in January and February that, that need, that this needs to address. So, I mean, let's, let's just get on with the getting on and, and, and deal with, with the other component of it, but we've got to get something in place before those two, those two, those two hearings, and this doesn't seem like it's going to be, it's going to get settled in a matter of 15 minutes either.
Okay.
Can I, I mean, I know I've killed everybody with the parking, I just wanted to suggest for a long-term, a, a second, in addition to whatever we do with this, if we were able to, if the way I'm reading that parking is correct, and it's one unit for a mixed, one parking space required for mixed use, and two for regular residential, if we could clarify that or interpret it in that way, that would also serve to limit the density of residential development downtown because of the, because there's limitations to how much space is available for parking, and it might, you know, help alleviate some community members' concerns.
I, I will put something together by the planning commission to address that, and I, I don't agree with that interpretation off the cuff, but you might be right, and I'll have to eat my words, so I'll, I'll make sure we clarify that by the, by the time the planning commission comes up.
Well, it needs to be clarified, you know, as well, because it's one of those things that, you know, when we have stuff, people argue differently, you know?
Absolutely.
Their way.
Yeah, this is proof why it's not, if it's not clear for us to debate, that are the supposed experts, then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have anything to gain by interpreting it the way I'm interpreting it, actually, I guess hurts my clients, but I've always, I just read it literally, and that's what I've read.
Well.
Good to, good to make it undisputable.
Yeah.
So what, what about we back up, and we just say 50% of the ground floor in the central business districts required to be commercial, and we urge that commercial be in the front to. to sustain a good viable strong streetscape?
That's an easy fronting, let's see, must make up.
It could be a corner lot, it'd have to be both streets.
Oh, that's a good point, that might be a.
And front.
That's why we say we urge, we not requiring, but we urge that it be on the streetscape, you know, to, on the front of the street, to, you know, people are always gonna have different weird lots and exceptions, that's why we say, you know, we're urging, you know, that the commercial be on the front, you know, supporting a good strong streetscape.
I do think we want to leave a little bit of flexibility because there are some areas of the CBD, like Church Street, that if we're gonna require 50%, we might want that more on, on Magnolia as opposed to facing a single-family residential street. So, we want to give ourselves that flexibility, and that this would do it, the thought process there, so.
Look, it's, nothing's gonna be perfect and we can't get into the minutia because somebody in Magnolia says, well, what if I want to do a 50% add-on on my house where I live in my residence? You know, is this triggered? And so, that's where we just have to trust that the Board of Adjustments will be there and the staff will be there, and, you know, we work with people in those cases like that.
Okay.
Well, okay. Can we just say non-resi, I mean, are those houses still zoned residential inside the CBD? Can we just say in all?
No, we don't need to get into that, because those are, those are commercially zoned and that, that whole area is a, you know, three-week debate.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we could cut it out of the CBD and make it a lot simpler or say that's a great area for growth that at some point in the future when, you know, the CBD is, you know, out of land, that, you know, that's an area it can grow into.
And that's already been kind of, you know, debated back and forth and above, so yeah, I want to stay away from that one. Okay, any other thoughts on that? If you'll email me, I know we're gonna all get off and wish we would've thought of this, but if you'll email me, I'll try to compile those into a coherent voice by the time of Planning Commission and email that back out to you. I'm gonna move on to the next topic, and while I'm, I'm gonna have to juggle around here the way Teams works to share some screens differently. This is in response to the ladies we saw in November is, are the ones waiting, Donna Dowsie and their family that inherited a lot on Greeno Road that's R1, and they don't have any development plans, they don't want to be developers, they just want to sell it, and the market viability is not the optimum zoned R1, so they would like an alternative. And I think we've all discussed the alternative and there needs to be one. We put our best foot forward and that didn't quite work out, and that's the way it is. So before we show you this, I want, and I think I said it in the email and at the top of the, this is not an overlay district. If this did, does make it through in this format, it would not affect a single property owner anywhere. This is a district, just like R1 or R2, that someone could voluntarily ask for. So, it's pretty simple in its, in its format. Can you see the use table here? Is that shared? The, the kind of grid of?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it would add, and this is, I'm not tied to the name or anything, the intent here was a long, we'll take Greeno for example. Greeno Road has village nodes, commercial nodes, village centers, and what happens in between those spaces? And we've kind of working titled it Highway Transitional District, so it's those spaces in between. We have a use table that closely mimics B4 but has some, some small changes, and, you know, this one, instead of, you know, debating each of these uses, if y'all can tell me, look through this after we get off and email me, hey, I don't think this should be on there, there's nothing tied to any of this, if there anything specific needs to be debated, we can, there's really nothing, bed and breakfast and general personal service, I'm sorry, daycare are the only things allowed by right, others go to Board of Adjustment for approval. The other one to think about, in B4, two-family duplexes and townhomes are not allowed. Is that something we want to allow in this transitional district if approved or not? I think because it's currently residential was the thought there, but it's just as easy to take those out and make it more closely match B4. So, I've got one no already.
I, I'm the one that's shaking my head no, but that's just off the cuff and I'm not gonna talk about it right now for the interest of time, but I'll provide my, my thoughts on that. We already got a residential zoning district that nobody can do anything with, and to have more people thrown in the midst, in the midst of it to oppose somebody else that wants to do something different next door to them is a massive train wreck, again, looking for a place to happen.
Okay. We do have some retail here that would require Board of Adjustment approval. I'm gonna go through this kind of quick and we can come back to it after we get to the language of things. Outdoor sales and garden centers limited that B4 doesn't allow. And then your, some of the services like outdoor recreational facility, daycare, convalescent nursing home. And then the only one that I've, the logic here, one we share with you is manufacturing is limited, the definition of that, you know, the thought process there, the city's really trying to encourage technology industry. So, you know, a place that builds computers or, you know, something like that, that really doesn't have a byproduct outside of it, like standard manufacturing, and it would have to be Board of Adjustment approval was the thought process there. Dimension table, I won't even bring it up, all it does is call out a, the next section we're gonna look at, and I'm gonna pull up the Word document so I can make notes. That is here. So at the end of the special district section, which we've been in the whole time, includes CBD as well, there would be a section here for Highway Transitional District. I won't read the language for that intent, but the intent is to provide an alternative to single-family. You'll notice, and then there is a note there that I want to be clear on this, I don't want this to be misconstrued as something it's not, I'll draft some language to say this is not, because there are overlay districts within this section, be clear, that's not what this is, and it is voluntary, Terry, from a landowner, not a, not an overlay district that is going to change everyone's land use to, if adopted.
The thing, let me just add one little quick thing here or thought. You remember in the meeting where these women came and were asking us for, I guess, really for some help? And we understand what's going on on Greeno Road for the last number of decades where there's no residential? I would suggest if you've got a problem with this type of a, a district whereby it's not an overlay district, it pertains to each individual property, if you don't like it, then come up with something else, because we need to find a way to relieve the, the problems with those properties that are currently zoned residential on Greeno Road. And so if this is not it, then don't just come, I'd suggest, don't just come and say, I don't like this, come on with some, with another idea then.
Well, in that case, I like it. My idea was just to allow postage-stamped PUDs, and you and Hunter said as long as I volunteer to administrate them, and I said, I don't administrate nothing, I like your idea now.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna let you do, we're gonna let you do flag lots all up and down there.
There we go.
You got good, you got good stuff on those, Lee.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Hey, I'm sorry, it's Chris Williams, and I, Commissioners, I haven't really had the chance to meet a few of you yet, I've talked to a few of you and look forward to the opportunity to work with you and happy to be a resource here and help you on any way I can. And Hunter and I have had some good discussions already today about some of the things, so I've shut up and been quiet. But for this, procedurally, I know y'all know that, but just so it's clear, you know, making sure we're all on the same page of how this would work if this were ultimately recommended and approved, this would be an option for a property owner to come in and make this request basically as a zoning change. It would have to be approved at a hearing or recommended at a hearing at the Commission, and then it would go forth as a ordinance or a proposal with the recommendation of the Planning Commission to the City Council for ultimate approval. So, procedurally, this is, that's how this would work, it would not be an automatic overlay that would impose any property restrictions or rights on anyone unless they came before you and specifically made that request to you.
Thanks for highlighting that distinction, that is, that's the important message. Just because when we get out something, hear the word Greeno, that's gonna be a fear, so thank you for highlighting that very important distinction. We, I have thrown this out here as well because we've talked about it, well, let me, I'm skipping ahead. Size of lots, I've put a minimum on here of 20,000, it's just under half an acre. I think you need that to accomplish any commercial viability on these, and looking at the lots, there's nothing that's under that size. We might not want these subdivided into miniscule lots that, so, that's a preservation there. Location, more notes on this one and questions on what our intent is. So I went ahead and put in, this is, this highway, where we have a state highway, another jurisdiction coming into our town and kind of giving guidelines is what we're especially concerned about. So I went ahead and put in 104 and 181 as well. I haven't done a full study of the lots on that, so we will have that before the Planning Commission, I think that's extremely important. Just wanted to, as my train of thought and what we've discussed, if there might be these same problems on those as they develop into commercial strips and that same option should be available to those people.
We've had a couple issues out there on 181 and same exact issue, so I think you're thinking right on that, Hunter.
Okay. All right, now, this one might get some debate.
Hunter, did you mean to be sharing your screen, because I'm not seeing the text?
Yes, I did, as much as I've juggled that, I have not, thank you so much, that would probably help guide the conversation here. Okay, hey, can y'all see that? Is it sharing yet?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm here, we've written location here, and y'all have all the, of the text in red was what you were sent last night. The blue notes are kind of what we've, we kind of talked about with Chris and I this morning and generated some other thoughts. Should these be limited? Because what, what we're intent here is R1 and R2. That's mainly what people are stuck with that can't sell. And I will have to look at some of those weirder ones and see if there's some R4s and R3 PGH and some of those, but I think my recommendation is that should be limited to R1 and R2, and we don't allow a B2 to go to the, well, I don't know if there's a risk, and we had some, when we got into the weeds this morning, there was some fears, and right now they're escaping me, Chris, do you remember what those were?
Well, without looking at the use table, not off the top of my head, but we just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a, an unintended backdoor where someone that was zoned something other than R1 or R2 would come in and be able to come in and request a change that wasn't contemplated or intended by this, this proposed district.
Yeah, and I do remember what that is.
I'll be getting in the weeds with that, but with it said, I mean, the whole purpose of this is to help people out in the residential zoning to non-residential, you know, spots, and so, if they're already B2, they're already B2.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that was, you know, some of those commercial notes, not where we want the commercial, we don't want those changing over to a softer density. All right, I think we answered the next one, at least got some feedback, if anybody disagrees, feel free to email me. Adjacent, I think we can handle that, that was, that was kind of some of our notes is adjacent, the correct term. What our intent with this draft is only those properties that are touching the right-of-way of state and US highways. And I'll, I can't, I won't switch it over, there are actually flag lots. So what we're intent is, is for those that might have a building, you know, right there at the road, not a lot that has a flag lot through the middle of a parking lot. So the next note is, should we include a minimum lot width on eligibility? I've looked at the lot, like the lot with the three ladies that were in there and some of the smaller lots, and if we set a minimum of 100 foot wide, that would not, I don't think that would impact anyone, that still catches all the ones that we've looked at, even smaller lots, so, and where it protects us is someone coming in with that flag lot and trying to squeak a, you know, I can build another, something right here in this 35-foot wide strip under this zoning, so that, yeah, yeah. Starbucks, I think, has a model for that. Dimension standards following through, lot frontage shall be adjacent to the highway unless otherwise approved within a planned unit development. That's to give some creativity of planned unit development if they so choose, if they turn their back on the road, provide a 20-foot landscape buffer, but the other side is a great Main Street-type development, I think that, that meets the intent, so didn't want to prevent that. Setbacks mimic B4, excuse me, and just one, I will touch on one thing, all of these things that already exist in our site plan or tree ordinance, they're just kind of cobbled together to, to, with a couple of notes, mixed-use building, same thing, if there's a mixed-use building, there's a ground floor requirement for, they won't have the 40-foot, but they still have greater than the five-foot extra, so, same thing we just looked at, the ground floor. I did mimic this, this language, mixed, and this is another reason why mixed use gets, there's mixed use mentioned in so many sections, I mimic the mixed use of the medical overlay district that has a residential must make up at least 33% of the upper floors. So that's the only addition there. Parking, this is kind of the only maybe unique thing, it is in some of the village-type districts, but, but no, we don't have anyone that has adopted those or asked for those. Parking shall be located behind the front building line. I put an "and" there, and my question is, should there be some language about a landscape slash fence where a parking lot is placed to the side of the building that screens it from the road?
Let me, let me ask a question, Hunter, they, we talking about these smaller lots like the women that came to us up there off of Dyer, south, just south of Dyer. What if somebody had a 40-acre field?
We actually, I skipped over a note here, I think it was, yep, on lot size, up here we said minimum shall be 20,000 square feet, there's a note there that I think any lot over three acres should be excluded because they can apply for a PED.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
What was that comment?
They agreed.
Okay, yeah, all right, I got it.
All right, so, any concerns on landscape screen or parking, let me know via email or comments. Any freestanding single-use or tenant-retail building shall not have a building footprint larger than 8,000 square feet, that's already in place for all commercial property along 98, actually, in any business district, anywhere within the city. Because of the way that, and this is kind of semantics here, it draws it out of a standard business district by creating this special district, so I just need to replicate it. And then the F is, is with very minor changes, is copied directly from the tree ordinance with one, one important distinction, it adds Highway 181. Any properties along 98 and 104 and laundry. Any properties along 98 and 104 and laundry list of, of streets within the city require the first 20 feet to be reserved for a landscape green space and tree preservation area. The, there has been a lot of confusion on that. I think we heard in the Greeno overlay crowd that, you know, you're, you're providing, you're taking, it's a taking because you're taking 20 feet for a setback and then 20 feet for a landscape or green space buffer. That was never the intent, so the last sentence here actually is intended to, to clarify. You know, that 20-foot required by setback can, is this, it can be one in the same, maybe the same as, as this 20-foot green space. Now, if somebody wants to build 40-foot back and has the room to do it and, and still get parking in the side rear, I don't think that we, we're, we would be opposed to that. I didn't include the build-to line because unless we're going to get into form, you know, a lot, I, I think you're not, it's not going to, effective. I think, but, but with these smaller lots, you're, in requiring 20-foot, they're probably going to have to be built pretty close to that anyway.
Hunter, is this, what about parking lot buffers? Does that just go back to the landscape ordinance where that will be required? That's what I hear homeowners worried about.
Yes, and there are, there are other things that this does not exclude and we can, we can put that kind of standard catch-all. You know, this does not negate other portions of this code and any other city ordinances or state, federal or, you know, city ordinances, guidelines, regulations. There are some buffer requirements when abutting R1 or residential property and there's some parking lot screening at, but, and I went through those and it, it's a, a lot of those are required on certain commercial type, you know, that, that are not allowed within this district. So we, we, we can certainly put that.
Well, yeah. The light, you know, light not, I guess since we're talking about green space, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, parking, I mean, part of the lighting wouldn't shine into adjacent residential.
Right. And yes, no, so this, this wouldn't negate anything, this would potentially override, if that's our intent, override anything else that, that another district or, or regulation applies, but would not, if, if it's not here and discussed explicitly, those would still apply and I think that, that can be handled with a, a general rule note about regarding other regulations. All right. I'm going to color code that one because that's to-do list for me. And then this, this, the last one, and it doesn't talk about the language within here, but something unique within the special district, we could potentially do, and most of you know that going to board of adjustments for a variance or a conditional use here is, is just going for a conversation and it doesn't require a site plan. But within the zoning code and since it's a, a special district, I believe we could require any of those uses that had to go get special condition, we could require a site plan. My thought process there is it, it would prevent the shell game of going to sell one thing to board of adjustments and then come getting their variance or getting their approval for a special condition and then they, you know, just completely switch gears and do something else.
Maybe switch.
Yep. So we, we can kind of draft that if you think it's a good idea.
I don't see why that wouldn't be, why that should be a problem. I mean, and take the, take the three women as, they came to us as an example, you know, they had somebody that wanted to use that piece of property.
Right.
Well, certainly they could, they could have developed a site plan before they got the approval that they.
Well, and they might, where, where that actually works better is they, I think they kind of changed their opinion, you know, they don't want to, they didn't have anything and that's, that's, that's something we're going to hit on, you know, a few times, there's, we're going to get more of those where they don't have a developer, they don't have a plan, they don't have any idea of what, they just want to sell it. But where there's a level of protection is they can sell it and then the whoever that buys it has to come in and get those special, only on those.
Well, most of the, but most of the time what you've got is the person that comes, that wants to buy it, is going to buy it subject to it being approved for the development that they want to have placed on it.
Yes.
So they're not going to buy it picking the poke, just like these people didn't, that wanted to use the house from, for commercials.
Yes.
Use.
Mm-hmm.
They weren't going to buy it unless they had it rezoned.
Right.
So.
And, and.
Six and one-half dozen of them.
Yeah, and we could, we could require that time of rezoning to this district, but I think that would, I think there are a few that would potentially, you know, but, but it, it's hard to hit every, like we, we've talked about, it's hard to hit every.
Well, the thing they've got now is, with, with this is they've got, they've got something they can at least hand to a prospective buyer.
Yeah.
That there is now an alternative.
That's right.
Which is something that we've not had forever.
Well, and, and what we, what we're, the question we're getting in, keep getting into, if, you know, if they came in and did an office building that met these requirements, you come in and get your rezoning, you don't need a site plan, go build it. It's, it's available by right. But if they do some of those other things that, you know, garden centers, one thing, Lowe's is a different thing, you know, what, what are you actually asking for in there? So that goes to board of adjustment with a site plan, so you can see, and it's tied to that site plan, at least with some substantial, you know, completion of it was, was kind of where we were going.
Yep.
All right. Any, any big, big changes that we haven't, that we needed to talk about and what do you think, Lee? Throw it all out and PUDs for everybody?
Flag lots.
Looks good to me.
Lee likes flag lots.
Oh, Lord.
All right. If y'all get home and think about, or you are home, don't forget where we're at. If, if you think of something, please send it to me and I will get, we'll get a draft together. All right?
Sounds good.
All right. Well, thank y'all so much. Yeah, I appreciate that, your time tremendously.
A happy holiday.
Yes.
Yes.
And man, rain did not sprain his ankle.
All right. Well, Merry Christmas, everybody. We'll talk to you soon.
All right. All right, I'll later. Bye-bye.